Again, it's May 16th, 2023. And what we're going to do is, first of all, we had the minutes from our last meeting. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections? And if not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And there is a second. Any questions, any other talking? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're going to move to three now. That is to receive a community health board report from the Community Health Services Administrator, Public Health Staff, and the Scott County Medical Director. Good morning, Lisa.
For inviting us. Here we go. Thank you for inviting us to come and speak to you today. Just have, actually, you don't have, might not have this in your packet, but this is just a reminder that today meets our statutory responsibility, one of them, to meet as a community health board. We do that twice a year. That's in the Local Public Health Act, Minnesota Statute 145A. It does also outline the mandatory areas of public health responsibility, which include assuring the local public health infrastructure through maintaining our foundational capabilities that include data analysis, health planning, communication, research evaluation, promoting healthy communities and healthy behaviors, including investing in healthy families, promoting positive health and preventative, preventing adverse health, preventing the spread of communicable disease, which we've done quite a bit of in the last three years, protecting against environmental health hazards such that pose to a risk to human health, including public health nuisances, preparing and responding to emergencies, and ensuring the availability of healthcare. Another part of that is conducting our community health assessment to identify the health priorities of our populations and implementing activities to address them. So today, just an overview. We're going to provide with, for you some highlights from 2022, some of which are in the annual report that you have a hard copy of the draft in front of you. And we'll talk a little bit about what we're planning for 2023 and what we've implemented already. And we'll hear a report on the statewide health improvement partnership and some initial data from Minnesota Student Survey. And then Dr. Wilcox will do a COVID update. So just a few highlights. This is from our drug-free communities. In 2022, we continued to collect unneeded medication through our Take It To The Box program. We collected almost 6,000 pounds of medication. We trained 50 community members on the delivery of naloxone, and that's for opioid overdose, in partnership with Steve Rummler, Hope Network. We have some billboards you may have seen. Currently, we have the Gummy Bear billboard. I actually saw three billboards over the weekend as I went to the garden center down in Shakopee. And that anticipated to reach 31,000, 31,820 cars daily if they look up and see the billboard. And we also partnered with 20 cities, providing the retail stores with the edible law, THC edible law, and education on the city moratoriums. For WIC, we had 1,502 WIC participants solely for Scott County. The average monthly participation in 2022 was 1,443. And we distributed, just for Scott County alone, $864,680 worth of WIC vouchers that typically WIC participants use in the community. And we also provided peer support for breastfeeding to 98 WIC participants. Family home visiting, we accomplished.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. Lisa, just, so for WIC, was this our first, was 2022 our first full year of having it back in house?
Correct.
And the number of participants? I assume much, our goal was to have more. Was it higher?
Our goal was to maintain. I'd have to double-check about higher because I don't, the Carver County numbers are not in there. I can get back to you on that.
Or to get them connected in other ways, too. I just wondered if you had a sentence or two about the, you know, any, any high-level outcomes from that change.
And actually, on the next slide, and there is some information in your annual report, we had a 73% increase in prenatal referrals to home visiting, and a lot of them came from WIC. So, and 289 new referrals in the year. That is definitely an increase. A lot of referrals are coming directly from WIC. It's, it's been really a wonderful feeder program to our, our home visiting program, as well as, it's not just a referral to home visiting. They are connecting them with resources. Some have been referred to the Family Resource Center or other cap for food shelf. So they kind of, it's, it's a really good gateway program. And it seems that clients are getting other resources that they need. Thanks. Our family home visiting program did, accomplished over 2,000 visits, home visits with families. That, I mentioned the new referrals. Out of those referrals, 121 actually had home visits that were scheduled and completed. For child and teen checkups, 11,602 child and teen checkups were completed in 2022 for Scott County participating children. And during those, over 1,000 referrals were made for follow-up care. So some issue would have been identified in the CNTC screening, and they connected them to further, for further evaluation. Almost 17,000 letters were sent out, and a little bit over 3,000 phone calls were made. Additionally, our child and teen checkup is very active in the dental, participating in the dental and coordinating dental screening for kids. They coordinated 1,120 students getting screened for dental in Shakopee. And of those initial screening, 6% had urgent to emergency dental needs. So sitting in the classroom with emergency dental needs that needed to be addressed. They also coordinated the first-of-its-kind partnership with Mayo Clinic and CDS. So that's a private-public nonprofit partnership to provide much-needed dental access down in the southern part of our county for children and, and adults in, that are low-income. Statewide Health Improvement Partnership, just in 2022. And Haley Miskewitz will do a much more thorough report for, for SHIP. We partnered in 2022 with 35 partners. We distributed almost $87,000 in mini-grant funding. So those go directly to our partners to do healthy eating, active living programs. And we also leveraged, delivered over $200,000 from our partners to work on those programs as well. And we have 17 different employers that we work with, which engage about a little bit under 5,000 employees in Scott County that benefit from SHIP wellness programs. In disease prevention and control, we had two active cases that continued treatment in 2022 that started in 2021. And we had three newly diagnosed cases. So these are active TB clients in 2022. It sounds like a low number five, but that required almost 500 direct observed therapy visits. So that's when a nurse goes out to their home daily to make sure that they're taking all their medication. We received 89 new referrals for newly arrived individuals. Normally, we have under 10, four to six. 89, that's a 368% increase. These are mostly, came from the Ukraine to our county. And we work to assure that they get in early for their refugee health assessment. We also investigated 16 new public health nuisance complaints, which represents a 220 increase in public health nuisances since 2019. And I do recall Jeannie say, be careful what you wish for. But a few years ago, when we created the Public Health Nuisance Law, but it really, we do believe this is from COVID, a fallout of COVID that we've seen a lot more public health nuisances. In emergency preparedness, we continue to, we continue to use volunteers in 2022. They certainly have been very helpful in implementing our work. Almost 700 hours of volunteer hours were used. We continue to distribute N95 masks, a little bit over 2,000, and a lot of home COVID tests, almost 20,000 home COVID tests. We are still distributing them as well. And we partnered with about 50 organizations during the COVID response. Looking ahead in 2023, as you know, the public health emergency ended May 11th. We did actually have a party on May 11th, a little party, to celebrate that. We are just a little tongue-in-cheek because we are still doing testing. We are still doing vaccinations. We are still seeing cases. And we still are experiencing some deaths in our county. And in the area of early childhood, we kicked off and fully implemented our two new home visiting programs, the MEASH program, Eternal Early Childhood Sustained Home Visiting Program. That's for the zero-to-two-year-olds. And our new Parents As Teachers for the three-to-five-year-olds. We have capacity, I believe, for the Parents As Teachers for about 44 families. We're actually almost full already. We have about 35. And we are doing, we're, we have pretty high caseloads already. We're not quite full for the MEASH program, but we did switch over. We're not quite sure how it was going to work out. But we switched over from the MOF program, which required an intensive amount of documentation with the hope that we'll be able to, to see more families. And very soon, we did gather the data for our Understanding Third Grade Reading Study in partnership with Shakopee. Khalif, my data planner, will be talking a little bit about Minnesota Student Survey data. But shortly, we'll have some preliminary data from the Third Grade Reading Study. And we did a lot on opioid prevention. Harm reduction strategies for opioid prevention is what we're kind of focusing on. If you read the recent NICO bulletin, it did talk about Narcan vending machines to deter overdose death. We're kind of doing a full-court press with harm reduction strategies right now. We distributed, we're distributing naloxone and fentanyl test strips to those that are, have been staying in our jail. We hope to get a Narcan vending machine. We're continuing to do Narcan training, distributing detera bags. So even though we've done actually quite a big push on the detera bags, and we have a lot out in the community, we are still seeing an increase in the pounds of drugs that are collected as well. So now there's two mechanisms to dispose, yet it still is going up. So that's, that's good news. Just some other stuff for 2023. We will be doing some coalition engagement with cannabis prevention. We have distributed a lot of tools and resources in the community, some education materials and campaigns. On the left, you'll see the Let's Talk Tins. Those are a newer distribu, newer, newer tool, tool for us that we're distributing. It's a dinner conversation simulator. Kids pull out a question, they answer a question around the table. We had these back when I was, my kids were little, they loved the questions. In the middle, you'll see the Gummy Bear billboard. Can you tell the difference? And that's part of the issue here. So we're doing a lot of education related to gummies and edibles in the anticipation that we want to prevent some childhood poisonings. And then the Parent Handbook is on the right. We have that in English and Spanish for high school, middle school, and as well as elementary. Initial feedback has been wonderful. Parents love the tool. It talks about choices and bullying and vaping and other positive enforcement and helping parents talk to kids about these issues.
Lisa, so where would, I mean, I might have missed this. Where would I find this? Would I see this stuff anywhere else, or is this stuff all at schools or at doctor places?
It's in schools. We've been partnering with schools to help distribute them. The St. Francis Hospital also is distributing the Parent Handbook and the toolkit, as well as the syringe service kits. The Parent Handbook was also given multiple copies to the library. So each library in the county has at least 25 copies or had at least 25 copies of English, Spanish, both versions, as well as we have on our website. When you click on our resource page, you can order them. We also, let's see, we also handed out, we, when we go to resource fairs, we also have the toolkits or the, the, the Let's Talk Tins, as well as the Parent Handbooks. So we're trying to saturate as many, get as many as possible in the community. Each school district was offered as many as they wanted, and a couple have ordered more. The other thing that was kicked off at the beginning of January is the partnership with Open Door Health Center. They're currently at our clinic twice a month. This is a partnership that is cost, is free to the county. They're utilizing our space. And they're a federally qualified healthcare center. So they're able to offer free services. They've been pretty much full since they opened up. And they're there on Fridays. And we are currently working with them to try and locate a permanent location for them to build. And that would be similar to their Mankato office with health, behavioral health, and dental. And then also, it's been an interesting few months. There's some pending legislation out there that will impact public health. As you know, cannabis legislation that has had many, many amendments as it's gone through committees. We're not quite sure where that's going to land, but it will certainly impact us. And there is some legislative funding allocation dollars for, specifically for public health currently pending, including car, public health funding for core foundational responsibilities, emergency preparedness to increase the capacity. During our past three years across the state, it was identified certain gaps in our ability to respond. And these dollars are to help improve that. And then also possible cannabis funding for prevention. This changes on a daily basis. It's difficult to tell you how much we're getting. It'll be more than a dollar. And that's pretty much all I can tell you right now. So I'm going to turn it over to Haley, and she'll talk about SHIP.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Great to see you guys this morning. And I'm Haley. I'm Statewide Health Improvement Partnership Coordinator. I always love to introduce my colleagues. And one of them that's in here today is Casey. She works in our context area, mainly our MN Eats context, which I'll go through the different context areas this morning with you guys. But also, we have lots of settings within the SHIP space as well. And so works within our communities, our farmer's market, which includes like our farmer's markets, community gardens, and also works with our work site wellnesses, Work Site Wellness Collaborative, which you heard about from Lisa earlier. And then another colleague of mine, Sarah. She works in each of our context areas, as she works with our schools and also our community and our commercial free tobacco. And so today, I'm just going to be kind of going over an overview just because within this neck, this new five-year grant, we got, our work has shifted a little bit. They've kind of redistributed how we work of context areas and setting areas. And so kind of just wanted to go over that. They did give us a seven-year data review that included 2016 through 2001, which you guys have in your packets, with just a little high-level overview of that information. And then go over our 2021, 2022 highlights, and then some partnership highlights within that 2021, 2022 year. And as you guys know, SHIP, you know, supports community-driven solutions to really expand opportunities for active living, well-being, healthy eating, and commercial tobacco-free living. And so some of the context areas now that they have divided our work into is Minnesota Eats, Moves, and Well-being, and then the commercial tobacco-free space. And then within each of the context areas, there is, of course, numerous SHIP settings that we work in, which you can see up on the screen. We are required to work in the community, the schools, and the workplaces, along with healthcare agencies. And we're required to do, they broke down our work between statewide activities and flexible activities. The statewide activities are going to be activities where all counties across Minnesota are working on to increase the impact of the work that's being done. And so with the funding level that we're at, we're required to do four of those statewide activities. And I'll get into kind of the differences within the, each setting, which ones we have of the statewide activities in each of them. And then just some of the partners to highlight that we're working with in each of our setting areas with our community would be like our food shelves, our emergency food programs, Mi Casa, our farmer's markets, CAP Agency, childcare. The biggest space that we work with would be the Readmobiles with the libraries, along with the Family, Friends, and Neighbors Network, which is our home, our at-home childcare providers who are not licensed. So helping them get education around within that space. And then all of our districts in our, in the schools are a part of SHIP funding. And then workplaces include the schools, Trust, Gamma Vacuum, and then our city governments, all of them also participate in SHIP. And then healthcare would be St. Francis, Mayo, New Prague, and then a couple of the Park Mikulitz that we have in the county as well. So like I said, we have different statewide activities within each of our settings. So in the slides, you'll see that each of this is broken into the different settings and then shows the different statewide activities that are being worked on across the state, specifically within the community setting. This year, we're, we just implemented actually a culturally appropriate food shelf, which is a supershelf, which is in partnership with the University of Minnesota with Mi Casa. So it's very Latinx-focused in bringing in those culturally relevant foods. And then we have the Food RX, which is, we call ours Veggie RX. And so those are different ones that we're working on in the community setting, along with park planning, and then some of our trauma-informed care and social connection as well. And then the childcare setting is a little bit slimmer on the statewide activities. It is heavier on our flexible activities. The flexible activities are pretty much to make up, to make sure that we are hitting all of the, the setting areas that are required for us to participate in. And so within the childcare space, we do, like I said, we have the Friends, Family, Friends, Family, and Friends Network. And within schools, these are the statewide activities. We are working in partnership with the Drug-Free Communities Coordinator with like the, the commercial tobacco-free schools, along with our different school districts who are working extensively on changing like their policies, how they approach suspension, and like sensation promotion on their grounds and all of that great stuff, too. And then within workplace wellness, a heavy focus that was requested. I should also back up and just say that in also this year, we did change how our application process is. And so our application process is right on our website, which allows all of the different settings to go ahead and apply online to get SHIP funding. And so allows them to really tell us what they see as the need is and for us to help them with that, be able to accomplish that within our SHIP funding. And so a lot of our workplace settings did really ask for breastfeeding-friendly workspaces. And so we're working with a lot of them to implement that for their staff, but also within the community as well. And then healthcare, of course. The Food RX, so our Veggie RX programs there, also working with partnering and networking within our, like our quick partner referrals within the different agencies, and then as well the trauma-informed principals coming into the healthcare organization and setting. And one great thing I would say within the healthcare setting is the fact that we can include non-traditional partners in this space, including like the YMCA, faith communities, youth centers, senior centers, the U of M fits in there, community centers, dental clinics, chiropractic clinics. So anything that really is fitting underneath that healthcare space. And then, kind of wanted just to give you guys a little bit of that seven-year data review. Like I said, in your packets, it's in there as well. And so this is going to showcase from 2016 to 2022, the end of that grant year, so September of 2022. And this would just show you that over the past seven years, which this is a great representation, but has some flaws within it as well, as you'll see on the setting space in the childcare. It shows that we only worked with three childcares, but that is because it's including the Family, Friends, and Neighbors Network as one, since we're partnering with them. So not including all the different Family, Friends, and Neighbors that are underneath that. And then the Readmobile, it's not capturing the reach with the Readmobile either. So this shows that we've worked with 86 different partners. But of course, there's many other partners that are, that are included that aren't being represented on here as well. And then with the way that our SHIP grant used to work in the past was different topic areas. Now you'll see that those have kind of been broken down into those, like they fit into our context areas, along with our setting areas. And so it just kind of shows where we worked within the last seven years with SHIP, with partnering within those settings. And then I always feel that visuals are great to have. So this just shows a map of where all of our partners have been located that we've worked and partnered with over the past seven years. So you can, of course, see that's a little bit more dense and the, closer to the city spaces of like Jordan, New Prague, Belle Plaine, Shakopee, and Prior Lake. But I love the fact that it also just shows that we are hitting every city within Scott County, including like, of course, Alcoa, New Market, and those townships as well. And then Lisa already spoke about SHIP 2021, 22 by the numbers. So I won't go back over this again. But I did also just want to point out, no, there was not something else I want to point out here. But just wanted to, oh, I wanted to point out that the leverage funds that we have in here were like included like farm-to-school grants, environmental grants, and other grants that we actually use some of our staff time on the SHIP team to help our other organizations within the county who don't have the time to apply to grants, or maybe it's not their expertise on putting in a competitive grant. We do help them with getting grants so that way we're able to take the projects that we're working on with them and really leverage funding to expand the potential of that project as well. So that's something that we are really excited about. And I'll talk a little bit more about some of the leverage funding that we have for even going into this year. One of the partnership highlights I wanted to show is the Veggie RX program. This is a partnership between SHIP in Scott and Carver, but also the Minnesota Landscape Arboretum, Mi Casa, and our Scott County Public Health Clinics, including Health Partner, or Health Matters. And the goal in 2023 is to expand this program. We, they were awarded a three-year USDA grant for $500,000 to help expand the program. So last year in 2022, they served about 30 Scott County families. But this year, we're hoping to double that, along with the fact that it will go from serving for eight weeks for families to 16 weeks. So giving them produce for 16 weeks. What's great about this program as well as, in 2023, we will be partnering with the Family Resource Center, so doing the distributions at that location for families and also using Hopscot to ha, break down any barriers for families that aren't able to get the Family Resource Center for produce. And then also the fact that they don't just get produce, but they're also getting recipes with how to include the produce and also getting nutrition education and being given referrals to other programs identified that they have as in need as well. So really showing that full linkage between that healthcare, community, and our food system here locally. And then another partnership that I wanted to just highlight was Prior Lake Savage Schools. In 2021, 2022, we funded a refrigerator to be set up at their centralized location for, for farmers to be able to bring produce to. So we constantly hear that from local farmers, small farmers, which is a huge priority for the Prior Lake Savage School District, is to be bringing in like families that are in their school district that are farming in the area. And one of the biggest barriers we hear about is the fact of taking time off the field. And so to work with a large school district like Prior Lake is a barrier for a lot of farmers because it would include them to have to deliver their produce to all of, I'm forgetting, 15 of the schools within the Prior Lake Savage School District, where this allows them to bring their produce to one centralized space, stored in their refrigerator and other spaces that they have implemented here. And then the school district actually uses their child nutrition services program to then bring it out to the 15 other schools. So really breaking down that barrier and allowing them to work with more small farmers locally here in Scott County. They currently work with, I want to say, five to six different small farmers, and they're looking to continuously increase that. And then recently, through the Minnesota Department of Agriculture, they had $4.2 million that were offered to schools for farm-to-school this year. And Prior Lake Savage was one of the school districts that was awarded $160,000 to expand their farm-to-school program. So excited to see just where they go. I will add, Jordan School District was also a recipient of this funding, and they asked for $10,000 and got that as well from this. So excited just to kind of, to continue to see this. As we know, like feeding students healthy meals, you know, plays a huge role into how they're able to take in the information that they're given throughout the school day. So of course, this is just like a very high level of their program. They offer Try It Tuesdays in their lunchrooms. They do meet the farmer, have the farmers come in so the students can talk to them, get to know them, and also have, you know, gardens throughout their district at their schools and do different programming around that. And then they also do bring in culturally significant foods that are representing their students as well. So they have a very elaborate program, and we're excited to be a part of that and to continue being a part of that moving forward. And then one of the last partnership highlights I wanted to showcase to you guys, if the last time I was here, I talked about how St. Francis put in a resiliency trail. As you know, within the Community Health Improvement Plan, mental health and physical activity were the two top concerns that we saw in Scott County. And that was, that's how these resilient trails from St. Francis was developed. Shakopee capsued. Shakopee cap students took what St. Francis did, and they duplicated it, but also adapted it to fit the high school. They made two different paths, one inside and one outside, to be able to be be used, you know, during all seasons in wonderful Minnesota. And then they also took the time to actually talk to teachers as well on how they could be implementing these paths and these signs within their classrooms as well to make sure that they're getting great usage. There's eight indoor signs and seven outdoors signs. And like I said, this was a great collaboration between ship, St. Francis, the Health Science Academy and Engineering and Manufacturing Academy and our cap students. So we're super excited as this is, you know, a innovative project, I would say, to really help, you know, raise mental health awareness and really teach, you know, those healthy coping skills within our districts as well. And that's all I have for you guys today, and I will turn it over to Khalif.
Morning Commissioners. For Khalif, the new kind of oldish data banner for public health. And I will present a short summary of the trends in, you know, the student survey. I'll present data from three surveys, 2016, 2019 and 2022.
Is the other one preloaded?
Quick overview of the student survey. It's been going on for the past thirty-three years, since 1989. It's conducted every three years. From 1989 through 2010, sixth graders, ninth graders and twelfth graders responded in the surveys. From 2013, sorry, to date, fifth graders, eighth graders, ninth and eleventh graders responded in the survey. Last year, seventy percent of school districts participated statewide. In Scott County, only Prior Lake and Savit, Shakopee and Belle Plaine participated.
Mr. Chair? Yeah, Khalif, is that, is that unusual that only half of our school districts participated? I seem to recall that they all used to participate.
Yes, so the survey is voluntary, so districts could opt out. Parents can, you know, have their kids not take it. Students are even allowed to opt out. So it is, last year, I mean, the last survey, 2019 and 2016, more districts participated.
Okay.
Last year was only these three.
Okay, interesting. And Savage-Burnsville didn't participate. I just, they're not on here, I just wanted to make sure. Sometimes they're, they're said they're at Dakota County School District. Did, they didn't either?
I'm not sure if they participated, but their data is included.
In Dakota County?
Thank you, Commissioner Broke. Their data is included in the Dakota County. This year, for the last year's survey, New Prague didn't participate, and they opted out. There, there were some other things going on in that district that they wanted to focus on. And Jordan also opted out for a variety of reasons, time, because the kids were trying to get caught up, and they did have some issues with the questions. But since, since I've been here, all the districts have participated. This is the first year. But prior to, seven years ago, every once in a while, we would get a school district not participating.
Okay, so there's some hope that they might come back. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. So the, over the three surveys, the participation rates among fifth to eleventh graders and male and female students have been more or less the same. In 2016, there were about 4,550 students participating. In 2019, about 4,650. And in 2022, 4,670. So, and the participation rates between males and female students, again, you know, almost the same, slightly higher for the males, but close enough. And this is particularly important when you see the, how much different, you know, the responses are between males and females. It's important to keep in mind that they were more or less equally represented in the survey. So the survey has several broad categories. A bunch of questions will be around demographics, you know, activities that students engage in, family and relationships, risk factors, health and safety issues, mental health, substance use and sexual health in general. And the survey has been growing in number of questions. In 2016, there were about 287 questions. In 2019, there were about 333. Last year, there were 427. Now, as new issues emerge, there is a need for, you know, more questions to be added. For example, in 2016 and 2019, you might have had questions asking about drug use, and many different drugs would be grouped together. In 2022, you might find that every question would have its own, I mean, every drug would have its own question. Another example is gender identity. In 2016 and 2019, you might have one question asking, are you, are you transgender or cisgender? In 2022, there were about ten questions, you know, one for each identity. So as new issues emerge, you know, everything takes a life of its own and warrants its own questions. So we focused on three areas. As I said, lots of questions, but as public health, we looked at mental health, general health and alcohol, tobacco and other drugs. So the first question asked in mental health is, you know, the students were asked whether they experienced any long-term mental health, behavioral or emotional problems. And by long term, they mean anything lasting six or more months. And as you can see, there's an upward trend, you know, from thirteen, between thirteen and twenty-five percent in 2016 to eighteen and thirty-nine percent in 2022. Another stark difference here is you have female students reporting, you know, almost twice as much as male students. So there is that disparity. Another thing that stands out is eleventh graders seem to be reporting more mental health issues than the eighth and the ninth graders. When asked if they felt depressed or hopeless, you know, more than half the days in the past two weeks, between 2016 and 2019, basically no change, but a huge jump, you know, almost tripling for female students from ten percent to twenty-eight percent, and just above double for male students, six percent to thirteen percent. So something interesting definitely going on. And, you know, first thing that would jump in people's minds is, you know, COVID, what happened in the past three years, what is the effect of the pandemic? And I think it will take a number of years to fully understand how much COVID, the COVID pandemic has impacted our communities. Suicide ideation and attempts. Students were asked if they seriously considered attempting suicide and if they actually attempted suicide. And this was, you know, between during the last year or more than a year ago. Again, you know, disturbingly, disturbingly high numbers for those who consider attempting suicide. Thirty-three percent, thirty percent, thirty-two percent for female students. When, you know, regardless of, you know, the pandemic, these numbers have been high for a while, right? Much lower for male students. It was on a downward trend, then after 2019, slightly going up again. For attempted suicide, it was going down, at least for female students, from twelve percent to nine percent, then back up to twelve percent. For the male students, again, less than half the rate for the female students. Positive self-image. So students were also asked if they feel good about themselves often or almost always. And you see the downward trend here. And this, you know, correlates well with what we saw in the previous slides. The less they feel good about themselves, and it's reflected in the mental health perception. So here you have, as you would expect, the numbers are reversed. Male students feel good about themselves, you know, way higher rates than the female students. But there's a downward trend for everybody, right? So getting worse across time. Whether they feel valued and appreciated by others, often or almost always. Again, male students reporting higher numbers, and there's a general downward trend. So these all speak to, you know, mental health, you know, issues captured by the data. Students were also asked about their general health, and the next set of questions were basically on health and weight status. For the students who say they're, who believe their health is excellent or very good, again, there's a downward trend. Still higher for males than female students. And you will notice there's a new group here, the fifth graders, so they will pop in and out, you know, once in a while, because they were not asked all the questions that, you know, everybody else was asked. For the weight status, female students reporting normal or underweight, you know, far higher than the male students. This was an upward trend, so it was improving between 2016 and 2019, and then slight drop in 2022. But that, but the numbers, you know, are high, so, you know, they're good. For those who say their general health is good, there's an upward trend, you know, basically more, most students over the years think that their health is good. For the weight status, I believe they should be actually overweight, the ones who reported that they're overweight. More male students reporting that they're overweight than female students. And the last group, those who said their health is either fair or poor, general upward trend. So most students are reporting that they feel that their health is fair or poor, which is not good, right? For those who are reporting that they're obese, again, slight upward trend. More male students think they're obese as compared to female students. Physical activity. So students were also asked if they had at least sixty minutes of physical activity in the past week. And so there are two groups here. So the ones who said they had physical activity for one or more days. Then the slide on the right showing what this looks like for how they, I'm sorry, that title should be physical activity, zero days, the chart on the right. So as you can see, slight downward trend and, you know, many gyms were, many gyms were, you know, those restricted access during the pandemic, so that that could be a reason why there is less activity. So when asked, when their last time they saw a dentist? They were asked if they saw a dentist during the last year, generally high numbers, which is good. At least eighty-four percent of students and above reporting that they saw a dentist in the last year. Slight decrease from 2019 to 2022. And again, I'm tempted to blame COVID, but, you know, we will only know after, you know, a few other survey cycles, you know, that's when we'll understand how COVID impacted this data. Students were also asked if a doctor or nurse ever told them that they have asthma or if they require an EpiPen. General downward trend for the students reporting that they were told they have asthma. And upward trend between 2016 and 2019 for those requiring an EpiPen, and slight downward trend from 2019 to 2022. Alcohol, tobacco and other drugs. Students were asked if they had used in the past thirty days, you know, tobacco, marijuana, alcohol or inappropriately used prescription drugs. So for tobacco, downward trend from 2016 to 2019, slightly, slight increase between 2019 and 2022, except for eleventh graders. Eleventh graders seem to be, you know, very slightly reporting higher numbers through the successive surveys. When asked about marijuana, again, there's a drop between 2016 and 2019 for eighth and ninth graders, and much less descent from 2019 to 2022. For the eleventh graders, however, they reported increased use between 2016 and 2019, a decrease between 2019 and 2022, but way higher still than the eighth and the ninth graders. And if you remember, the, the slides about the mental health issues, eleventh graders were also, you know, reported much higher numbers than the eighth and ninth graders.
So the eleventh graders are, they're more likely to use marijuana than cigarettes by a hundred and forty percent? And so at least seven percent are using marijuana, but didn't smoke a cigarette? Is that what I'm seeing?
Yes, more, more marijuana used than cigarette use, tobacco.
Because marijuana, is that more prevalent and easy to get than a cigarette? I don't know. Or more, I don't know, yeah, okay. And marijuana, I guess, I'm thinking that could include the gummy bearers and the candy and the, all that, whatever.
So it's general marijuana use, yeah.
Okay.
I'm frankly surprised, though, at the decrease from 2019 to 2022. I mean, that's great, but surprising.
Yeah, from, from about fifteen percent to twelve, three percentage points. Alcohol use, if you can quickly look back at the profile for marijuana and alcohol, they seem to have a similar trend. Eighth and ninth graders reducing between 2016 and 2019 and reducing much less between 2019 and 2022, but increase for eleventh graders from sixteen to nineteen, and then a dramatic decrease again, 2019 to 2022. So it's, it's interesting, you know, the, how they have a similar pattern. Prescription drugs, again, slight, slight decrease, 2016 to 2019, and a very small increase from 2019 to 2022 for the eighth and ninth graders. and a very small increase from 2019 to 2022 for the eighth and ninth graders. When asked how wrong, you know, the students think their parents, you know, think it would be for them to use, you know, tobacco, marijuana, alcohol, or prescription drugs. Good numbers, you know. There's a strong, you know, circles of influence. The parents feel it's wrong or very wrong to use, you know, these drugs. So high numbers above the 90s. Slightly higher for female students. General downward trend for female students and the eighth graders. Increase in the 11th graders, male students, and the ninth graders. When asked about marijuana, again, the numbers are high, but there is a, you know, significant drop between 2019 and 2022. And, you know, this could be speaking to, you know, the changing in the attitudes. Remember, this is how wrong they feel their parents think about this. So it could be an indication that, you know, households are warming up to the, you know, idea of marijuana being acceptable, which is definitely concerning.
Commissioner Brecki.
Mr. Chair Cleef, I'm sure the answer to this is yes, but I just want to make sure for everybody. When we look at our 2016 and 2019 data, that's only including the same schools that are in the 2022 data, right?
Yes.
Okay, just, I think that's really important for, for everybody to know. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we actually had to go back to the 2016 and 2019 data and keep only the school districts that participated in 2022.
Can I just add, though? We did look at the data with them all included, and it didn't really change it much, but we did take out the schools that did not participate.
When asked how wrong the parents feel it would be to use alcohol, again, the numbers are high, which is encouraging. Slight decrease for eighth graders and female students, which is the same thing that we saw with the tobacco from, you know, 2019 to 2022. For the prescription drugs, this kind of mirrors the trend in marijuana. You know, from 2019 to 2022, there's a drop in the numbers. So, you know, less students feel their parents, you know, think it's wrong to use prescription drugs inappropriately. So a similar question was asked, and this time it's how the friends feel about, you know, tobacco, marijuana, alcohol, and prescription drugs. General upward trend for tobacco. So, you know, that's, that's encouraging. More, most students feel that, you know, their friends do not approve of it, you know, at the end of the day. For marijuana, again, most students feel that, you know, their, their friends don't, you know, their friends think it's wrong or very wrong to use marijuana, which, which is kind of, you know, interesting. With the parents, you know, it seemed that the numbers are going down, but with the friends, the numbers are going up. Same thing for alcohol. General upward trend. So more, most students feel that their friends think it's wrong or very wrong to use alcohol. And similar thing for the prescription drugs, general upward trend. Final question was on risk perception. How risky do they think, you know, it is to use tobacco, marijuana, alcohol, and prescription drugs? They, these are the students who responded that, you know, the risk is either moderate or great. For tobacco, this is concerning. There was improvement between 2016 and 2019. Most students thinking, you know, there is a moderate or great risk. Between 2019 and 2022, significant drop. So less students thinking that there's a moderate or great risk associated with using tobacco. Same thing for marijuana. You know, if you look at the female students, from 68% in 2016 to 53% in 2022. Right? And it's downward trend for basically every, every grade and both biological sexes. So that is concerning. Alcohol, downward trend as well. Again, most students, or rather, less students associate a moderate or great risk with alcohol use. Prescription drugs, again, this mirrors what we saw with the marijuana. Slight increase between 2016 and 2019. Between 2019 and 2022, almost 10% drop in the number or proportion of students associating a moderate or great risk with the use or inappropriate use of prescription drugs. Any, any questions?
Questions, comments? I love looking at graphs like this. Lots of information, very good, thank you.
There's a lot more of that.
Who do we have next?
Well, good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Once again, it's really a pleasure for me to come and be a part of the group's work today.
What I would like to do is review with you where the, where we are status-wise relative to COVID at this point. Very pleased to say that COVID is becoming less problematic for us in the healthcare arena. It still is highly infectious organism, but as it turns out, it is not as lethal as it could be and has been in the past. So what I'd like to do is review with you this morning some changes in the status of vaccines available for this, this virus. And in particular, there's been, been some significant ways of changing vaccination, especially for our young. So I will be reviewing that with you primarily this morning. First up, the monovalent vaccine, which we started off with two or three years ago, is no longer going to be utilized. The monovalent vaccine is going to be discontinued. From now on, what we will be utilizing is the bivalent vaccine. Now, you may recall, this is a vaccine that has been developed to address the two strains, Delta and Omicron in particular, that have been most problematic for us over the last few years. So we're going to be utilizing the bivalent vaccine now in the future for vaccination updating and so on. We still have the Novavax and the J&amp;J vaccine, but we're using that in a very limited fashion now. We're going to be sticking primarily, especially here in Scott County, with the Pfizer and the Moderna products, the bivalent products that is produced by those two companies. When it comes to changes in protocol, we're focusing again on the young. Actually, Moderna, Pfizer have slightly different protocols to vaccinate the young. Bottom line is, they both are very effective, however, as we move ahead with the vaccination regimens for these, these kids. We have broken down, actually, the vaccination regimen depending upon the age of the child. Children six months to five or six years will receive a primary series of three doses of the bivalent vaccine. That's what we'll be utilizing to start off with them. Children five or six years old and up will have, and with no primary series only, will need just now one dose of bivalent vaccine, unless unfortunately they're immune compromised. In that setting in particular, it is recommended that they receive a three-dose series of the bivalent vaccine as well. So if they're immune compromised, the recommendation is they need three different doses spaced out over a prudent period of time. There will be no primary series started with monovalent. The series is going to be completed. If it was started off with that, the series will be completed then with a bivalent vaccine product in the, in the future. For kids 12 years of age and older, and they've had no primary series, they will receive one dose of a bivalent vaccine, similar to what's recommended for adults as well. If they completed a monovalent primary, the boosters, and a booster of monovalent, they will be given one bivalent dose as a booster for their future exposures to this COVID virus as well. For those of us who are 65 years of age or older, it is recommended that we receive an additional bivalent dose four months after the last bivalent dose has been given to us. That continues to be the recommendation at this point. And of course, adults younger than the age of 65 who have an immune compromised condition of some type, it is recommended that they receive on a regular basis an additional bivalent dose of vaccine to prevent breakthrough of COVID infections for them. Fortunately, we in this county continue to provide COVID vaccination clinics on an ongoing basis through our public health services. We have two COVID vaccine clinics per month in collaboration with Advocates for Thriving Communities. You can locate those times and dates on our website, readily available for review as needed. And then also, we've moved ahead now and actually integrated the COVID vaccine programs with the other vaccine clinics that we have available to folks through our public health services as well. So we've combined those two opportunities for COVID vaccine updates on a regular and ongoing basis. And I'll leave that then open for questions. Do you have any questions at all about where we're at with COVID at the present time and how we're moving ahead with vaccination programs and dealing with this virus?
Any questions, any comments from anybody? This is a great presentation today. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, I will adjourn the health meeting. For, yes. Okay, so we are going to take a short recess. We'll come back, do the pledge, and go right into our regular meeting. So we stand at recess. Oh, I got it, okay. Okay, we're going to convene our Scott County Board of Commissioners meeting for May 16th, 2023 to order. Would you all please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, good morning again. It's May 16th, 2023, Scott County Board of Commissioners meeting. We have no amendments to the agenda. You all received the minutes in one shape form or another at some point or another. Is there any amendments or discussion or any you'd like to have pulled, pulled for further discussion? And if not, is there a motion to approve said minutes?
Mr. Chair, so moved.
There is a motion. Is there a second? And a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. And as a side note, Commissioner Alrick is out of town today, so he will not be joining us this morning. Recognition of interested citizens, limited to five minutes per person or subject. If anyone would like to speak, come on up to the podium and let us know what you think. Anybody, anybody online, Michelle? Anywhere? Nobody? Okay, with that, we're going to move on to number five to receive information on Scott County deliver's topic, elections. And I see Chris Harder is here, and she's going to kick us off. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We are pleased this morning to bring to you representatives from our team of folks working on elections. We were last here in August of 2021. And since then, there have been changes to the things that are like really essential to the work of elections. And, and you are going to hear a lot this morning about accuracy, transparency, and security. And so we're really excited to look at some of the data and talk about some of the changes and improvements that have been made since that time that really built on a really strong foundation. And, and in fact, is better than it was two years ago. And you'll hear more about that. I want to extend a special welcome. We have two representatives from our cities and a representative from the Secretary of State's office. And I'll have to introduce themselves. And we're especially happy to have those outside guests with us today. So with that, I'd like the folks on the facilitator's side of the table just to introduce who you are and what department you work in. And then Julie, we'll start with you. And I'd like you to introduce who you are and what your role is in elections. And just because it factored a little bit into our prep conversations, just how long you've been involved in the work of elections.
Good morning, Tony Winnicky, Transportation Services.
Hi, Carrie, we met Economic Assistance.
Morning, Jake Grußing, Library.
Good morning, Julie Hansen. I'm the Property and Customer Service Manager for Scott County. One of my roles is Elections Administrator. I have been with Scott County for almost 24 years. I have been in this role for going on five. So I've been the Elections Administrator for five years and involved in the periphery of elections for a few years before that. So thank you for having us this morning.
I'm Janice Fromm. I'm the Property and Customer Service Supervisor. I manage the Passport Office and the Land Records Office. And I've been helping with elections since like 2016. I've been here since 2004.
Good morning, my name is David Maeda. I'm the Director of Elections for the Minnesota Secretary of State's Office. I've been involved with elections for around 25 years at the county and city level, and now, of course, at the state.
Good morning, I'm Amy Jerick with the City of Belle Plaine. I'm the Finance Director, and I've been working with elections since 2008, so about 15 years.
Good morning, my name is Amy Olson. I am the Election Administrator for the City of Credit River. And 2022 was my first year involved in elections.
Good morning, I'm Chris Loggie. I'm in the Community Services Division. I've been with the county for 21 years. Been working in elections since 2014, probably. Currently, my, what I focus on for elections is equipment, programming, and testing, YOCAVA ballots, scanning absentee ballots, and uploading results to the state on election night. Oh, and, sorry, all of the different publications that are required.
Good morning, I am Amanda Geis. I'm Property and Customer Service Specialist. I've been with the county for almost 10 years and been doing elections.
Thank you. I want to say one more thing before we get started. Evan, could you go to page five, please? One of the data sets we included in this packet for you is a population projection of residents in Scott County for ages 65 and over. And that group is going to impact future planning for this work area, really for most workers in the county. But it shows past and some projections on the growth of that population and that demographic going forward. And I know that folks on the panel may reference that later, so I just wanted you to know that that data set's in there on page five. So with that, Jake, you want to start us off?
Sure, thank you. No particular page for this one. Evan, this is a high-level question based on the narrative. So as I was going through the packet, and Chris mentioned your work to continuously improve from election to election, you guys get better and better with accuracy, security, and transparency. It was noted here that Mr. Maeda and his office called you the gold standard in the most recent election. But in the preceding paragraph, it says Scott County has no full-time election staff. And I'd like to, that seems pretty extraordinary to me. So I'd like to know, one, is that typical for metro area counties? And two, how do you, how do you do that then?
I can't say that it is typical. It is very unusual. We've been, and I'm sure David knows better statewide as far as I do, but we've done, really under Cindy's leadership, a really great job of removing those silos between the departments. When I became the Property and Customer Service Manager in 2018, that was definitely one of my goals, is to push those silos away, have us all work as one big team. Part of that... Part of that, in 2017, that was the last odd year election that Scott County would administer elections for the cities, township, school districts. So we focus on the even-year elections, and we pull in staff from whatever area we need. I call Amanda our boots on the ground. She is our right hand that does the everyday, she's the expert in the everyday work, and she does a fantastic job of balancing that with her duties in the Recorder's Office as well. Janice has, as we've gone on in time, her role has definitely evolved from being more of the Land Records Chief Deputy, that I would always tease her, and working more into especially absentee, but in 2022, even more expanded her role. Chris has been doing this for quite a while now, and she's taught me a lot. She knows a lot about what we do, and as we've moved along, we've definitely evolved in our duties, but it is very rare. It is a balancing act of making sure the work is prioritized and gotten done without actually staffing it. We do bring a good deal amount of staff along during those even-year elections. We bring staff into work in the office to do everyday duties, to especially support Amanda, and then we bring temps on board. In 2020, we hired 27 people to help us with our elections, from doing our drop sites to running our absentee room, ballot board, those kinds of things. So it is a balance and a juggling act. I don't know if you want to add anything about that, David?
So one of the narratives we tell legislators, there's only nine counties in the state that have full-time election staff, and predominantly they're in the metro area. So the majority of the counties in Minnesota, it's similar to this where the election, the staff running elections have multiple duties, and I think it's really important when the legislature meets as many changes as they have made this year that they understand that, because most counties don't have the resources to really implement major changes in an election year.
Thank you. I hope you're as proud as I think our organization is of that work to break down silos and collaborate.
I'll follow up with that and kind of a general comment in that same area. So transparency's been mentioned a lot in here. So, and you guys have done a tremendous amount of work in that area. So just for the audience, can you kind of summarize what you have done and what you're doing kind of moving forward in that area? It's evident that, you know, we've got a, as you mentioned, Chris, a growing age-wise in the county. We've got a growing diversity in the county and your education process, you've made a lot of strides in that area. So if you could kind of summarize those points and what you're doing to help educate the public?
Sure. Speaking to the transparency part of the question, one of the things that we tried really hard to do, especially in 2022, is do as much as we could in a public forum. Elections is a constant balance of transparency and voter security, privacy. It's walking that knife's edge of giving people the look into the process without revealing data. So we did our absentee ballot board that we did hire election judges for. We did our absentee ballot opening. We did our absentee ballot, running of ballots in a public conference room, which, speaking of security, then of course, elections is a hot-button topic, right? So it's something that when we did the planning for this, we balanced what the public could come in and see, making sure we had egress for our staff. You know, you have to think about those things now. So those are some of the things that we've done for transparency. We advertise that both on our monument sign, in the newspaper, in the Scott County scene, the website, those kinds of things, so that we could invite people in to see the process. That's something that we're really proud of, that we've been able to do and will continue to do in the future. We have some ideas, of course, about how we can educate the public more in our process. Something that we heard about recently was kind of an elections academy to invite the citizens in to see what it is that we do. I do our election judge training with support of our staff, and having something similar to that available to citizens to come in and see, to remove that mystery. Elections should not be mysterious. It is just a process, and we want people to understand that. As far as the education piece, we are learning a lot about continuing education, and I know David, I've asked to maybe speak to that a little bit, but there are opportunities out there, more so than ever, for folks like myself and our team to take election classes, for example, through the Humphrey Institute. It is something that you can't get a degree in, in Elections Administration, but there are educational programs out there that are available that would be really valuable for us. I don't know if you want to speak to that at all. You?
Sure. So if you're not aware, Minnesota's very fortunate, because at the University of Minnesota, Humphrey School of Public Affairs, they have an Elections Administrator Certification Program. The other one is based in Houston, Texas, and it's connected with Auburn University. So I was fortunate enough to be appointed to the Advisory Board at the Humphrey, and we were really trying to encourage as many election administrators in the state go through the program, because the goal really is, and I hate to use the word, professionalize our job, which hasn't been the case in the past, but I think it's really a foundation. I hired someone out of the Humphrey program. He was outstanding, and he got stolen away from me as Washington County's Elections Manager.
Amy and Amy, I'm just wondering if you have thoughts about the improvements in transparency and security from the city level?
Do you want to go first?
It's a very high consideration or very, the public has a lot of opinions and misinformation. So we're always welcome to have them come and watch and see what we do. I love it when they want to learn and they ask good questions. And what we can do to improve that education is valuable, because we should have trust in the system and have the transparency. It's vital to having that trust in our system.
We'd agree with that. So 2022 was my first year with the City of Credit River. My day job is actually communications in Hennepin County. And so first and foremost, the partnership with Scott County was absolutely instrumental. And I think one of the things that I heard from our residents as they came in and voted absentee for the first time in person at the Credit River Government Center was they felt like they knew that the election was happening in ways that perhaps they hadn't before because of the sending of the postcard. I had, I don't know how many people who walked in and said, I don't know if I need this actually to vote, but I brought it with me, and it let me know that I had this option. And I thought that was absolutely essential. I think we have tried as a community to make sure that our ballot boards have been posted, that we have done what we could in order to make sure that the process is as transparent as possible. But I think there are some other things that we can continue to do and continue to learn, and that partnership with this group is going to be instrumental in order to do that. So the idea of having a residence academy specific to voting would really intrigue a number of our voters, I think. And so trying to figure out how that could be implemented, given the resource constraints that you all face, I do think it would be well worth the time and investment.
I know your office relies some on volunteers for election judges and those kinds of things. Is that a training? Could volunteers be part of an academy presentation or a training that it wouldn't have? Like, because I appreciate your sensitivity to this staff capacity, Amy, but we have some other resources? Yes?
Absolutely, sure. Great idea.
I have a question. On page three of your narrative, you kind of talk about current legislative initiatives, and you reference early registration of 16 and 17-year-olds. I'm wondering if you can say a little more about that? Like, what is the kind of the purpose and the benefit of registering youth before they're able to vote?
Sure. We spoke with legislators about that this year, about, tell us more about why you're asking for this to be part of, you know, part of the legislation. I am the Legislative Co-Chair for the Minnesota Association of County Officers, so I work with David's office, with legislators directly, those kinds of things, go to testify in different initiatives as needed, meet with legislators in person on Zoom, those kinds of things. And that is one of the questions that we asked. And really, I think it's the reverse of the, what do we look at when we look at our population and how we're aging? How do we engage youth earlier in the process? One of the things that I've seen nationally is that the Gen Z, if you will, that group is pretty underrepresented in their voting numbers. So just to get people engaged and aware, I believe is the biggest part of why that was put into legislation this year.
Evan, could you go to page six, please? Do we have thoughts? I appreciate your comments about that, Julie. We have a pretty high percentage of voter turnout in Scott County, and I'm wondering if people have thoughts about what supports that? Like, why is it different here?
I don't know that I can tell you why it's different. We do have a very active, engaged population that want to have their voice heard, which is great. We try to produce as much communication as we can, and that, of course, is an area that we're trying to improve. To Tony's question about our diverse population growing, we want to work with partners in the community to educate people on what their options are. We've tried to do everything we can think of to say, here's all your options. And voting is a right, of course, but it's not something everyone wants to do, and it's not something that we can force people to do. That is absolutely their choice, but we want to make sure that we put all of those options out there. There are options for absentee if they want to vote in person, by mail. If they're a Yuokaba voter, which is a uniform, our overseas citizen can vote in a different manner, because they're not here in Minnesota right now. Just really try to communicate, but knowing stepping into this role, our voter turnout has always been high. So I really just believe we have a population that wants to be involved.
Where does our voting rank compared to the rest of the metro counties? Whereas Minnesota across the United States? And then it's on this page six figure as well. And then is there anything being done specifically in the midterms, since that's much different value or percentage? Is there anything targeting that?
As far as your question as to where we fall in the metro, we're kind of right in the middle. Some of the other counties are, Hennepin, for instance, is quite a bit higher than we are, and I attribute a lot of that to their communication. I'd like to model a lot of the things that we do. They have a wonderful communications team over there in Hennepin. And they have the staff to do it. So the counties are really, really great about sharing. No one's expected to recreate the wheel. And if you've done this, may I borrow that? May I use that on my website? Everyone's fantastic about working together. So there are a lot of things out there that I'd like to model, and I think that pushes their voter registration up quite a bit. As far as nationally, Minnesota is traditionally number one in elections turnout. We jockey with, is it Massachusetts?
Colorado.
Colorado for number one. So we fight real hard to be at that number one spot, and we pretty consistently fall at that number one spot, which is definitely something to be proud of. And I apologize, you asked a third part of your question.
Yeah, just the midterm elections.
Sure. Well, 2022 was a unique year for us in that we had redistricting. So every 10 years, the movement of the legislative boundaries occurs due to the shift in population after, you know, after the census determines where do people really live. So we built a redistricting team to present to the board, to allow them to choose the best plan. Part of that, we made the decision, like Amy referred to, to send out what we call a PVC, a postal verification card, to every registered voter in the state, or I'm sorry, in the county. And you'll see on one of the charts, the number of postal verification cards that we sent, let me find which page that is, was somewhere in the neighborhood of 110,000. So that's on page 10. And that's our voter registration accuracy chart. That was a really big difference for us to go from a normal year of, you know, somewhere between 15,000, 20,000 of those cards that went out to 110,000. So I think that, like Amy said, really reiterated to folks, hey, you know, you're registered to vote, here's your location. If your location changed, here's your new one. But yeah, the midterm turnout is very different, obviously, than what 2024 is going to be. We are gearing up for a huge turnout for the presidential election, and it really just varies. That's the thing about elections, is you really have to go into it preparing for a huge turnout. I can't prepare for a 25% turnout on a midterm. I have to prepare for very much higher, because what if we're in the 90s, right? So our ballot orders and our supply orders and all of those things have to reflect what it could be.
Evan, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just had a quick question, staying on the same chart. So there's a really high accuracy rate with the voter registration. Can you talk about, like, what is considered an inaccurate registration? It looks like it's referred to differently than an incomplete. So what makes something inaccurate?
Sure. In 2022 in particular, with the volume of postal verification cards that went out, that's the measure, that's the way we've come up with to measure that accuracy. So if we attempt to mail you your postal verification card at your home and it gets returned to us, it gets labeled by the post office as to why you couldn't deliver it. And then Amanda goes through, indecodes those very mysterious codes on those postcards to try and determine what exactly that means. Some of those are, people are out of state, right? Maybe they're snowbirds, they're on an extended vacation. Maybe the post office doesn't recognize that that person is registered to receive mail. But I will say, in direct correlation to the volume that we sent out, we had a lot that was returned. Returned, we had 4,300, which out of 110,000 isn't a lot, but based on the phone calls that we had from voters that said, well, wait, I've been living here for 30 years. We know that that's not perfect either. But an incomplete registration would be more of someone providing their information to register to vote, especially on paper. They're very hard to read, of course, when they're handwritten. We do get a lot of paper voter registration applications in the mail. They may forget their birth date or part of their name or their address or something like that. So that would be more incomplete versus inaccurate when something comes back in the mail and they're simply not at that address. They registered there, but they don't live there. And it does happen. We've passed along a handful, maybe 10 actually, to the FBI for folks that registered in addresses that don't have homes yet. So.
Evan, could we go to page nine, please? So maybe about this measure here, there's language that I think a lot of residents would certainly find important, that part of our job is to ensure no voter has voted twice, or that folks ineligible to vote have been able to cast a ballot. And I think this is Chris's area, right? The voter record post-election review. And it says, since the implementation of electronic poll books in 2018, the voter record is more accurate? Do we have data on how much, how accurate is the voter record? And what is the improvement from going from the handwritten to the poll books? Because this data just looks at the hours spent, and there's a tremendous efficiency Because this data just looks at the hours spent, and there's a tremendous efficiency gain. But I'm wondering about the, the shift in accuracy as well.
I don't know. Do you, I don't, we don't, I don't have any statistics, I guess, to share.
Yeah, we don't necessarily have statistics. That's definitely something to try and go back and look at. When I stepped into election, poll books were just coming in. The very first election was the primary in 2018. So I hadn't done the paper voter registrations from election day in the past. The two of you have both entered and, and done that data. Poll books hasn't made it perfect. There is still a human element of entering that data on the front end. I think we made a really huge improvement in 2022. The poll book will allow someone to add an address. And that is a necessary function. Because as much as we ask for ads to be submitted to us from cities, for us to be able to get all of that in the statewide voter registration system, sometimes things happen. Especially after redistricting and things shifted and that. We were able to lock down those poll books so they could not add an address unless they called me first and said, it won't let me. It's asking me to manually precinct this voter. And I said, hit the back button two times. So we'd go back and then we'd walk through it again. And I believe we only had to add two addresses on election day. So I, I think that Chris spent less time doing address cleanup, but that's anecdotal. It, it isn't solid data that we have. I know Chris said that she spent time cleaning everything up. And sometimes it's ave versus avenue, you know, and those kinds of things. Because if you try and upload the statewide voter registration system and it's not an exact match, it's just not going to take. So she spends, the bulk of this time is going through those files.
So is there an, an interface with like USPS or what, what is it matching against? Okay.
There is, in the statewide voter registration system, there are verifications through USPS and a whole host of other systems. When we did our redistricting, we chose to delete all of the old addresses out of the statewide voter registration system and upload all of the new addresses because the data entry needed to correct what was there, we decided was going to be too onerous. We had some issues. It wasn't perfect. But overall, considering all the many thousands of addresses that we have and of course, the almost 100,000 voters that we have, the problems were, were pretty small. So.
So the verification is done in SVRS with the postal service, then that information is transferred into the poll books. So when you're entering an address or something, it's pulling up whatever came from SVRS into the poll.
You could add, so I was a city clerk in Minnetoka, and we were the first jurisdiction in the state to use poll books. We started using them in 2009. So I really pushed for it statewide because, based on what I was hearing from our election judges, that it walked them through processes and helped eliminate mistakes, particularly election day registration. Doesn't let you miss a step. And I think that's one of the reasons they've improved accuracy.
There was a reference in the written material to us having to replace poll books? Has that happened or that will happen?
It's happening this summer.
It's happening this summer. And what's the funding mechanism for that?
Those are being, the equipment technically is owned. 2018, when we put in poll books, the county portion of that, because it was purchased in aid, in partnership with a grant, was paid for by Scott County. So the current iPads that are the poll books are owned by Scott County. But that was delivered with the expectation that the cities and townships would be responsible for any replacement cost. So the reason they need to be replaced is simply because they're aging out, because they're iPads and Apple only supports them so long. Of course, we are not going to, I mean, the physical iPad could last another 10 years, but we are not going to risk not being able to have those security patches and those things in there. So the funding for the few iPads that we own, we own five or six. The county does pay for, but the cities and townships pay for those upgrades themselves. Tabulator equipment as well is owned by the city or township. And we have a small handful of backup in our absentee machines.
Okay, thank you.
On, on page 11. Actually, a post-election review has got to be within one half of 1% and, and we're greatly exceeding that. So is this like operator error or hanging chads or what? That's all, right?
Don't do that.
So I mean, what are some things that you discovered? It's a very small percent, but I'm just kind of curious. I mean, what, what are you finding? And is the whole thing tossed out then or just that, that portion that was not accurate or what, what happens with that?
It actually, no hanging chads, let's be clear. We don't have those here anymore. We've, we've not had those here, but those don't exist anymore. I know. Generally, the, what we see is maybe someone filled out a ballot and pencil and we didn't know or didn't realize. The other thing is, and that's something that we introduced into legislation this year, is on the ballot itself, when you do a write-in, you need to fill in the circle, right? With your very special approved marker. And then you need to write in who the person is that you're voting for. If you don't fill in the circle, the machine doesn't count it as a write-in. So they go through and there's a possibility that when this hand count, this post-election review is being done, that you would, you would have gotten a vote that maybe you didn't get before because it didn't get filled in and officially counted as a write-in. That is actually something that we've tried to have changed through legislation is to make everything the same. Really, those were our, our biggest things. Very little other issues. I don't know if you saw other things in other places, David?
It's typically that voter marks ballot marginally, where it will put like an X instead of filling in the old. So the machine might catch it or it might not. So it's typically the way, or they use a marking device that the tabulator has a hard time reading.
So would this data suggest to you that those tabulators are pretty accurate?
Yes. 99.9% accurate.
Okay, thank you. The 2020 election was the first election that we held since the reconstruction of the buildings and the new space. And you guys moved around a little bit and all of those things in the process. And I'm wondering if you, if someone can talk about what that meant for security and, and just how that reset after the building construction?
Sure. The construction, the reconstruction, the layout that we were able to have our voices heard for the elections room, the secure, we have a secure elections room and a secure, secure elections room, like a ballot storage room. The layers of security that you need to go through to simply get to that room. Everything is badged access now. So folks, some folks can get into, say, the storage room for elections, which is where we keep our blank envelopes and, you know, those kinds of things. But only a very small handful of us have access to the secure ballot storage. No keys. Everything is badged access set up through facility. The improvements that it's brought really has been vast. We have a lot of steps. Everything is kind of spread out a bit. But the layers of security, the improvements we've been able to make and even utilizing, balancing, like I said, that security with the transparency has been really great. No one really knows where the elections room is, which is the way it should be and the way that we will keep it. Only those with access are allowed down there. And it's, it's vastly improved to what we had before. It was secure before, but the elections storage room was approximately the size of a postage stamp. And we had to keep everything in there. So it really was a challenge and our workstations and all of those kinds of things. So with the way this building has been set up, even with the no public access to the staff areas has, has done a lot for us.
Thank you.
In addition to that, just the two large conference rooms that are right off of the atrium is a great opportunity for us to be able to do some things and invite the public in. You never know how many people are going to come to watch you. So previously, we would have a smaller conference room where we would do our public accuracy testing. But now we have a larger room and we could use both of those rooms. One of them for ballot board and one of them for ballot opening or whatever the case might be. So that was, that was a great improvement as well.
So this discussion's around page 12. Report to that. So can you, and it is trending in the right direction, but can you just talk about what those percentages mean and the precinct reporting balance?
Absolutely. We go through the reports from the precincts after every election. So after all of the returns and the materials and the equipment come back from the cities and townships, they bring that all back to us. We, as a team, sit down and go through all of the precinct numbers. What I always like to kid about with this one is math is hard. And after, Amy and Amy, I'm sure can attest, I know my very first call in an election, my first election, I got a call from Belle Plaine at 5:15 in the morning. So folks are starting their mornings at 5 o'clock and they're not ending until the polls close after 8, plus all the other time that you put in. So really generally, what I feel like we see with this is math is hard. There is a tabulator tape at the end of the night that you have to fill out with how many ballots you received, blank ballots, how many blank ballots you're sending back to us, how many voters checked in on the poll pad, how many ballots you ended up with in your tabulator. And it's okay to have more voters checked in than you have ballots. It is possible that someone could show up, and it does happen, that people show up to vote on election day. They look at the ballot and they go, well, this isn't what I thought it was, and they leave. So they may have checked in, but they have not voted their ballot. So there's a host of reasons why something like that could happen, and that doesn't mean anything bad. It's just that out of the 53 precincts, we had four that had something that was off. And again, like I said, not, not bad or nefarious, just not everything came out to zero. So.
All right. I'm just wondering, so you are, this is a group that has really, like, if you look at the data over time, high performance over time across the years, across the elections. You have talked today about efforts to continue to build on those, on really strong performance. And I'm wondering, two years from now, you'll be back in front of this board. Like, what do you hope to talk about? Like, what's going to be different or better two years from now?
I'm hoping to be retired. I don't know.
So you'll be a viewer.
Janice will be in the audience. Really, one of the focus items that I would like to spend time on is something that we touched on a little bit is communicating with our growing diverse population. That is an opportunity that we need to take advantage of. And working with your team, Chris, and community leaders across the county to try and educate people on what those opportunities are, as well as election judge recruitment. Of course, you have to be a citizen to vote. You have to be a citizen to be an election judge. But there are many citizens across the county that maybe haven't been exposed to elections. One of the things I always like to, to stress too is there's a lot of fear of the government, right? In other places in the world and not like what we grew up with. So we want to bring the friendly face of, hey, we're here for Scott, we're Scott County. We're here to help you. We're here to help you learn. And we'd love to have you come in and be a part of election judging and voting and those kinds of things. Especially here in this area in Shakopee. I know that the city of Shakopee definitely would welcome, I know other cities would as well, would welcome a more diverse election judge base. So those are the kind of things that we really want to focus on to bring us to where we are. We want people to walk into a polling place and see someone that looks like them.
Are there other things that you would hope to build on?
I think communication with the voters to get the information out there. We try many different ways with websites, with newsletters, with the newspaper. And to get them the accurate information is really important too. In reaching the diverse population, there is a lot of people that, you know, I've always voted, I've always, but then there's the other side where they don't know and it's, it's a little fearful for them and they don't really want to come in. So, and it's the communication and to build that relationship with the community.
I would agree. I think that is going to be a big thing. And one of the challenges, I think, too, and Julie knows this far better than I do, is just, you know, you look at the demographics for Scott County and our election judges do tend to be, you know, very seasoned in terms of experience with voting, serving as a, as a voting, as an election judge. But the population of those judges also does tend to, you know, skew toward retirees, people who have the time. And one of our election judges was a college student. And I said, can you recruit a few friends for next time? Just the idea that it can help ensure that continuity so that we can continue to administer elections is going to be important. So, but yeah, I would agree. I think communication is going to be a big thing.
And also for this city's perspective is the partnership with the county.
Absolutely.
Because as a city, it's, we need the expertise of the county staff to assist us when we have questions.
And I, I just have to offer my sincere thanks and compliment to the entire team. Every time I had a question, I had somebody on the phone within two rings. And I had one instance where I need, can I call you back in five minutes? I want to say it was about two. And it was absolutely instrumental to make sure we had throughput for the voters who wanted to feed their ballots into the machine and make sure that we were following both the spirit and the, and the letter of the law. So I, we could not do that in a small community like Credit River if it wasn't for that wonderful partnership from you all.
That I can say is one of the things that I think I'm proudest of in the five years that I've been in this role is the partnership that we've been able to build with our cities or townships and our school districts. Those relationships are incredibly valuable. This is not something we could do without them. It absolutely isn't. Sometimes I think you hear that lip service, we couldn't do this without you. No. And I tell the election judges in training the same thing. We could not do this without you. And we value each and every one of them and the relationships. And something that we started with the general election in 2020 was drop sites. We don't have drop boxes for ballots in Scott County. And in fact, we have a drop box here at the campus for folks to drop other things for anywhere across the county. If we get a ballot in that drop box, it gets rejected and they get a new ballot. And there is a sign on the front of the, of the box that says that we will not take an absentee ballot that way. The direction we decided to go was manned drop sites. So we set up staff with an iPad and county internet. And we hired the staff, but they host them. So we were able to provide as many options as possible for ballot return, which in 2020 especially. which in 2020 especially was something that was very important. We will continue that for the general elections in the future. But again, drop boxes, just like everything in elections, can be controversial. So we have just completely gone away from that and stayed away from that. And the turnout in the primary and the presidential nomination primary coming up in March is low enough that the demand for that is not as high. But we'll see that in the general election next year as well.
Thank you. I think with that, Mr. Chair, I will return it back to you.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Any questions or comments? And I want to start with one, and I'm going to ask David. When is, when were all the votes tabulated, like, for the 2022 election? Like, you had everything in and all results were out throughout the state.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, good question. So basically, we had everything on election night. I think we went home at like 3:00 in the morning. But, I mean, everything meaning it's 99%. We'd have stray numbers coming in the next day.
Okay. And the reason I ask is, you know, sometimes you see across the country, and I don't know if they're using, like, stones and tablets to get votes or what, but how come you see, well, this race, they haven't counted everything yet. And it seems like a week, we have our results here, 10:00 at night? It's like 11? Just asking that. Why is that, do you think?
Well, first of all, very good point. Each state is very different on the way that we run elections. But one of the things in Minnesota that's unique is we don't have provisional balloting, which is in states that have that, the voter votes about, but doesn't get counted until they get verified. And most states have that. So there's always going to be a pool of ballots in most states that don't get counted on election night. Other states also have postmark for their mail ballots, where it has to be postmarked by a certain day. In ours, we have to have them on Election Day. And so, again, in every state, it's a little bit different, but in Minnesota, we basically have everything on Election Night.
Because you could almost say, well, we've got 4,000 of these provisional ballots, but this, the only race that could be, you know, determined differently is ahead by 6,000. So you could almost call those races, though, couldn't you?
Mr. Chair, I had to hold my boss back on that. In 2020, we did have a postmark. Absentee ballots could be postmarked, had to be postmarked by Election Day and then could be received afterwards, which was unique to the pandemic. And my boss basically said, can we tell the press if there's 200 outstanding ballots and somebody is ahead by 300 that they've pretty much, yeah. And we really didn't want to do that.
Okay. Oh, I see. Okay.
Can I add to that point as well, Mr. Chair? One of the other things that is different and unique about Minnesota is we are able to open absentee ballots before Election Day. A lot of states do allow that, but some do not. So they cannot open absentee ballot envelopes until the polls close. So they cannot report those results for however long it takes them. Michigan is one of those states. So when you hear in the news that they're still not reporting and they're still not counted, that's a big part of that, is they may have had, you know, we had, just in our county, in 2022, 18% absentee. If they had 20% of their voters that voted absentee, they can't even touch those until the polls close.
So they're not waiting for some little lady who forgot she had 2,300 votes in her trunk to show up at the, I don't know. And we've all heard that story, right? It's like, what do you mean you forgot anyhow?
Okay, sorry.
Any other questions or comments? Yep, go ahead, Commissioner Beer. Oh, you, go ahead, Commissioner Beer.
I'll just make some comments and save a long email because it's just all positive, good stuff. I really appreciate, I know it's hard and it can be very difficult for staff that we don't have any full-time election staff, but from this chair, as a board member, from my taxpayer chair, thank you. I mean, that's the right way government should go. And it makes me feel better for continuity and knowledge of the process, just even the last seven years, looking at how many more people really can understand and speak to elections. And it's kind of like an emergency preparedness thing with staffing. So I do appreciate that. Do acknowledge that it can be difficult. And I get it when you look at some other counties who maybe have dedicated election staff who not only run the elections, but then have time to think and improve and do data all the rest of the year when you have all kinds of other jobs. So, thank you. I appreciate it. I still think it's the right way to go. Love the talk about just election education or election news. The community, because of so many of these things we hear, is very interested in elections. And finding some ways that it's not necessarily all staff, but maybe volunteers, maybe some of our election judges can get, go out and spread that message can help all of us, when I say all of us as government, with kind of the anti-government angst and the distrust, to really go out there. And I think community members hearing from their peers about the process, being able to ask questions is just great. So I know early on, we talked about a possibility of that. I liked that. But otherwise, just thank you. And I think, yes, motivating younger folks to get involved. My, I don't know how old he is, my youngest kid, 23, I guess. He's served as an election judge for the city of Shakopee the last couple of elections. It was a great experience. I think because he did it at this age, he'll continue doing it whenever it works in his life. It would just somehow to get him there and then we'll keep him for a long time. So I appreciate all your efforts there.
Thank you. Commissioner Beer?
Thank you very much. The, what is it, the last, no, sorry, page 11, the accuracy of post-election review. This is, is this the bar chart where we talk about doing two or three precincts when you do that? So, full disclosure, I have been one that has reached into that hat literally and pulled out precincts, no funny business, no nothing. And I watched, gone upstairs to watch the recount when they were, well, I guess here. There's always a little something here and there, but super high numbers of accuracy. And those are always open for people to, even in COVID, I think we had some plastic or something, but they could still peer in, like, I haven't seen or gotten a sniff or heard or, what was that, of anything off, except truth. So that's awesome. But I also just wonder, you know, like, page 10, and then, I don't know, was it Tony that brought up page 12? You know, you have these little, the collective, we have these little potential rooms for misinformation and things to blossom and bloom. So it's like, you know, however we could close those gaps to just remove any possibility for things to grow. And I can't help but wonder if voter ID would help. And here's my question on this. I don't get why voter ID is so politically charged. I don't get it. Can you help me? Anyone? Why is that not the law of the land? And I don't get it. I don't get why it's such a heartbreak for some people.
Do you want me to pick someone to answer that?
I'm throwing it out there. I mean, we've got a guy from the state, you know, we
Let's do it that way. Commissioner Beer, I can't really tell you why it's so politically charged. I just don't know. I can tell you that I spend a lot of my time talking to voters and talking about why elections is not political. Elections is a bipartisan, nonpartisan, really nonpartisan process. We all, elections administrators across the state, set our politics aside and just do the job, like Amy referred to, to the spirit and the letter of the law. I can tell you, it is definitely a hot-button topic. What we do, of course, is we enforce the law. I got more questions about that in election judge training this past year than I ever have. And to be honest, my response is always, we enforce the law. So we let the legislators decide how they want it to be. Legislation this year is huge in the elections arena. There will be a lot of things changing. But we enforce whatever it is.
And I know we do locally. Like, I totally get that. Like, that's what I'm saying. Like, I've been the one, you know, when I was on the ballot, to pick out what precincts were going to get randomly, you know, looked over. I've seen the room, like, there's no, like, you know, there's no big black rolling box of mysterious paper showing up, or water main breaks, or, you know, some guy looking up at the light. I know, I know it works at the local level. And I also understand that the core infrastructure of elections is a political. But is, that part is, that part is. But good night, in the last few cycles, it has been anything but that. The infrastructure has been apolitical, but wow, political parties going crazy on getting those votes in any which way they can. So that's why I just like, if you got voter ID and things are, does it make this, I lost my page, but, you know, the reconciliation of the registration report, does that increase that reporting percentage? And then the bigger one is, does that help also, you know, math being hard, does that help precinct reports being balanced? So there's just no, it just eliminates the possibility of questions. I'm looking at you, but I guess I'm really looking at the state, you know, what the state has to say about that. Like, I don't get it. You need an ID for so many things, simple things.
Yeah. I'm going to deflect your question a little bit because voter ID has been a political issue ever since I've been an election administrator. I think the political argument is there's certain populations that have harder time getting IDs. I will just point out, though, that there are verifications going on behind the scenes. I might not be aware, I think Julie mentioned, but all voter registrations are checked against the driver's license database or social security database and verified that way. We belong to a group or consortium of states you might have heard about called ERIC, where we share, we are allowed to share data across states. So if someone moves to Wisconsin, the two of us are talking to each other and we inactivate what. So there are things going on behind the scenes. We do have voter ID for election day registration. I mean, so the most typical way to election day register is to show your driver's license. And that's because they're not doing the upfront verification that's done on other voter registrations.
The other piece of that is when you absentee vote, which I know is a lot of, for folks, a lot of the mystery, right? You do have to provide identity verification. So you have to provide your driver's license, the last four of your social. And we match that last-case scenario. If that information is missing, we can, we don't. Our absentee ballot board judges can do a signature verification. So there are other verifications, of course, that are done as well.
Thank you. I have one more question, before I forget this one. And anyone from the Secretary of State office can answer this. It'll be an easy one. You know, in some races, you know, if, I don't know if it's under a quarter percent, you know, you do a recount or whatever, and someone say, oh, they only lost by 38 out of, you know, 40,000 votes or whatever. And I say, oh, they might have won it. How often does it come out, though, that the person who had, like, 50.25%, that won by a little bit, actually gained votes over the guy that lost? Because statistically, there should be, you know, almost half the time where the winner gets a few more votes than the person who actually lost. You see what I'm saying?
Yep. So the recounts I've been involved with have never flipped the winner.
Okay.
The threshold for most races is one-half, 1%. And like we were talking before, our voting equipment is extremely accurate. So to flip that many votes would be very difficult. I mean, obviously, if you win a race by one vote, it's more likely you might win that recount. The recounts I've seen tend to, the difference between Election Night and the recount is, again, because the voter marks a ballot in a way that can't, the machine can't read, but a human can determine voter intent. So in recounts, it's not unusual for candidates to gain votes, but it usually is not one-sided. It's both candidates.
All sides should be able to gain, what's the most votes that have ever, you know, if it's been like 10 votes, would you say that's maybe a chance for the guy that lost? Or is it got to be less than that almost?
It really depends on the size of the race. Obviously, a commissioner's race is different than a state representative's race. But, yeah, I mean, again, the voting equipment is incredibly accurate.
It's pretty accurate out there. Pretty good. Okay. Good. Thank you. Commissioner Brennan?
And there's been conversations regarding ranked choice voting and can a county do that across the whole county? Or can an individual race do that? Or, you know, is that something that you see coming up in Scott County?
Currently, we cannot. There, in the potential legislation, there was a task force being developed to study ranked choice voting. Currently, only first-class cities, is that the correct?
It's charter cities.
Charter cities, thank you, can adopt ranked choice voting if they choose. But there really haven't been studies on what happens. They're independent on their off-year elections or in their independent standalone elections, they can adopt ranked choice voting. So for the city of Minneapolis, for example. But it's not something that can be done right now on the same ballot as, for instance, your race. So it is being looked into. The ranked choice voting task force has evolved into a secretary of state kind of study that will look into and determine if ranked choice voting for whatever races are allowed can be on the same ballot as, say, for instance, like, the secretary of state's race. Currently, that's not a thing that can be done. So there's looking into it. And I know that there were some recommendations that the legislature was possibly looking for upon conclusion of a study to determine the feasibility of, can things be intermingled?
Okay. Thank you. Very good discussion, very good topic today. So with that, anything else? Nope. Okay. With that, we are going to move on with the rest of our agenda. And we're going to move on to our consent agenda, and these items are deemed non-controversial and normally pass in one motion. 6.1, adopt resolution number 2023-11, approving the rezone of 10.2 acres from rural residential reserve, RR1 to rural residential, single-family, RR2, preliminary plat and final plat of Hunter's Pass, consisting of two lots on 10.2 acres, Daniel R. and Lori A. Haw, applicant and property owners, in section 23 of Spring Lake Township. 6.2, adopt resolution number 2023-110, approving the final plat of Holiday Chestnut Boulevard, Casey Beaton, applicant and Holiday Station Stores LLC, property owner, in section 15 of Jackson Township. 6.3, adopt resolution number 2023-121, authorizing entering into a service agreement with Trinity Services Group, Inc., for correctional food service. 6.4, adopt resolution number 2023-126, authorizing entering into an agreement with Great River Energy for the Trunk Highway 169 and Bluff Drive Overpass Project in Sand Creek Township. 6.5, adopt resolution number 2023-127, authorizing Scott County's continued joint participation with Carver County in the Families, Family Homeless Prevention and Assistance Program, FHPPAP. 6.6, adopt resolution number 2023-129, approving the rezone of 100 acres from Urban Expansion Reserve District, UER, to Urban Expansion Reserve Cluster District, UERC, Bernice Elizabeth Devine, revocable living trust, applicant and property owner, in section 19 of New Market Township. 6.7, adopt resolution number 2023-144, authorizing the grant application for substance abuse and mental health services administration funds, and if awarded, the acceptance of entering into a grant contract amending the 2023 budget and adding three full-time equivalent positions. 6.8, approve the temporary one-to-four day on-sale liquor license for Hometown Bats Foundation in Belle Plaine Township. 6.9, approve the appointment of citizens to advisory committee. 6.10, approve payroll processing of personnel actions. And 6.11, approve record of dispersments and approve claims. Those are the 11 items on consent. Are there any you'd like to have pull for discussion or for a different vote?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent business.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And there is a second. The one I will, I just want to comment on is 6.1. We've been working on that one for eight months. It's just somebody who wanted to do a little lot split. And there was, first thing was, the planning zoning didn't really like it. And the highway didn't really like it. And every time you thought we were done with it, then it was, then the soil and water, or where people got involved and they didn't like that there was too much water. Anyhow, I'm glad that one is basically taken care of. There is a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're going to move to 7.1, and that is to adopt resolution number 2023-118. We're gonna move to seven point one, and that is to adopt resolution number two zero two-three dash one-one-eight proclaiming May fourteenth to the twentieth, twenty-twenty-three as National Police Week in Scott County. Good morning.
The purpose of this agenda item is to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-three dash one-one-eight proclaiming May fourteenth through May twentieth, twenty-twenty-three as National Police Week in Scott County. In nineteen sixty-two, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May fifteenth as National Peace Officer Memorial Day in the calendar week in which May fifteenth falls National Police Week. National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in line of duty for the safety and protection of others. President Clinton also signed Public Law one zero three dash three-two-two, which directs that the flag of the United States on all government buildings be displayed at half-staff on May fifteenth, National Peace Officers Memorial Day. Since seventeen eighty-six, more than twenty-three thousand law enforcement officers have died in the line of duty. According to preliminary data compiled by the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund, as of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, two-hundred-and-twenty-six federal, state, tribal, and local law enforcement officers have died in the line of duty. This is a dramatic, oh, I'm sorry. This is a dramatic decrease of approximately sixty-one percent from the five-hundred-and-eighty-six officers killed in twenty-twenty-one and is almost entirely related to the significant reduction in COVID-nineteen deaths. Sixty-four officers were shot and killed in line of duty in twenty-twenty-two, mirroring the sixty-four officers who were shot and killed in twenty-twenty-one. The sixty-four deaths by gunfire in both twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two continues to represent an increase of twenty-one percent compared to recent historical norms. The average age of fallen officers was forty-four years with fifteen years of service. On average, each officer left behind two children. The men and women who provide law enforcement in Scott County are dedicated professionals who work every day around the clock to protect and serve the citizens who live, work, and travel through Scott County. This resolution is to show support and appreciation and to say thank you to the men and women who serve as deputy sheriffs for Scott County, along with all the police officers who serve within the communities of Belle Plaine, Elko New Market, Jordan, New Prague, Prior Lake Savage in Shakopee, and the Shakopee, Menwackan, and Sioux community.
Thank you, and I'll read the proclamation. Whereas there are approximately eight-hundred-thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities around the United States, including members of Scott County Sheriff's Office, and members of the police departments of Belle Plaine, Elko New Market, Jordan, New Prague, Prior Lake Savage, Shakopee, and the Shakopee, Menwackan, and Sioux community. And whereas since the first recorded death in seventeen eighty-six, more than twenty-three thousand law enforcement officers have made the ultimate sacrifice and died in line of duty. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved in the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial that was dedicated in nineteen ninety-one in Washington, D.C. And whereas May fifteenth is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day with Federal Appeal one oh-three dash three-two-two directing the flags to be flown at half-staff on that date in honor of fallen officers and their families. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
I will make that motion, absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioner Beer?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Breckie, any discussion? All I will say is it's getting to be a tougher profession. Last night at Prior Lake, the police chief said there's one-quarter of the people coming to be police in the schools that there used to be. So every hundred there was, there's twenty-five. And of the twenty-five, only three or four should actually probably think really about becoming policemen. There's some people that probably should, or wanna be, that shouldn't be. So it's difficult. So thank you for what you do. With that, any other questions or Commissioner Breckie?
I just was turning on to be able to vote yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you again. Okay, with that, we will move on to committee reports and commissioner updates. I will start with Mr. Brennan.
Okay, I'm ready.
I didn't see anyone's notes out.
My thing is off. Happening, so hopefully people can go check out that exhibit. As well, the Historical Society has offered an interim executive director position to somebody and that contract position will run from mid-June to November. The May ninth was CDA meeting. The CDA is working with the Shakopee School District on the purchase agreement for the Central Family Center in Shakopee. The plan is for a mixed-use site that will house the CDA and approximately sixty senior housing units. And I had an opportunity to watch the school board last night, Shakopee School Board meeting last night. And this agreement was approved by the school board. As personally as the neighbor in that neighborhood, I look forward to having new neighbors and seeing a redevelopment of the site. The Community Land Trust project in New Prague is wrapping up and there's an upcoming open house. This will be a great opportunity to take a look at Community Land Trust and how development will look in other Scott County communities. Like the one that's approved at County Road sixteen and eighteen in Shakopee. Economic Development hosted a tour of Scott County with Greater MSP. The board had a look at the preliminary twenty-twenty-four budget. The CDA received three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar livable communities invest grant from the council for Prairie Point Beacon Interfaith Project, as well as an award for two-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand from the Minnesota Housing for Up Bridges Grant. This will allow for fifteen vouchers for individuals with mental illness who are homeless or facing imminent homelessness. Also, on May ninth, I attended the Prior Lake, Spring Lake Watershed District meeting. And there was a discussion regarding the lining of the Prior Lake Outlet Channel. So that will be coming up soon. Let's see, the May ninth was the Fish Meeting. May tenth was Scale. And May tenth was my meeting with Administrator Vermillion. May tenth, I attended a ribbon cutting and tour of the Shakopee flats, and that's down on First Avenue. And May fifteenth, last night, I attended the Human Services Resource Council meeting. And pretty much with the public health presentation earlier today was that presentation last night. So I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Brennan. Commissioner Breckie?
Thank you very much. May second, we had a workshop after the board meeting. Also on May second, I participated in the Together We Can Steering Committee meeting. And then that evening went to a Pro Act board meeting. At the Pro Act board meeting, as you know, I go to those probably a couple, twice a year if I can. You know, the biggest issue talked about is really staffing, like all of us, they're dealing with staffing issues. And then just some transportation issues that really their responsibility and the site's responsibilities. But talked with Danielle and some other folks to see if we can be helpful to that. Now we're in the future seeing what's going on. But they actually have quite a big waiting list for the Shakopee site, but can't take on any more folks because of staffing challenges. So it was good to be there. Our Pat Jones, who's the parent representative from kind of the Scott County area, was there. You know, Pro Act's good, good shape, just dealing with that staffing challenge. On May third, I had breakfast with Bo Beller from Minnesota Rent Fest to hear updates on their progress. I very much encouraged him that we need to see a lot more progress by June first because there's many deadlines in that amended CUP. And that at least my reading from our board is that one of the most important things is the transit. You know, it's really the transit and having a good transit system for folks to park off-site. So that was my message. It was very congenial and wonderful.
And how close are they?
You know, May third already was two weeks ago. I don't, I don't know. I have heard some concerns from other stakeholders, as you can imagine. So hopefully, hopefully, they still got two weeks and they're rolling. May third, I spent a couple hours at the Capitol at Transportation Conference Committee. Throughout those, this first two weeks of May, our colleagues from the other suburban counties, we've tried to make sure that there's been several commissioners in the room for each Transportation Conference Committee, even when there weren't opportunities for testimony. But just to really continue to hear what's going on and show that we're engaged. May fourth, in the evening, attended Scott County Sheriff Reserve Graduation. Had two new, no, three new reserves sworn in that night. No, four, four of them. Three of the four were women, one man. So I was just happy to see three women. It was interesting to hear about their backgrounds. They're all young, at least in my view, young. Several of them had military experience, were back to civilian life and thought that this was a good opportunity. One young woman, she works for Minneapolis Traffic Control. You know, some really good synergies. And it was great to be with that group as always because they provide just a ton of value for our county. All the events they help staff and to keep people safe. It's, it's just wonderful what they do. May fifth was Scale Executive Committee. May fifth also was at Transportation Conference Committee at the Capitol. May ninth, spoke to Shakopee High School Community Leadership Class as part of the Academy's program. It was great to hear that class, juniors and seniors who all have volunteer projects, service projects going on, but also leadership projects, real diversity of projects. And I just was, I was commenting to some of our friends from the schools at a meeting since then. Just even in the past couple of years, it's been fun to see the kids in this class even more engaged. You know, when it first started, everybody's like, oh, what's this class do? What's it about? But at least the students I spoke with that day, really confident, really engaged, really doing some work, learning by doing, you know? It's almost like four-H, so. May ninth also had monthly meeting with County Administrator Leslie Vermillion. May ninth also had the CAP board meeting. May tenth had the Academy's of Shakopee Steering Committee meeting, which we hosted here at the Government Center. May tenth was the MICA board meeting. May tenth, I think I was at the Capitol till midnight that night, meeting with our other suburban counties and Ramsey and Hennepin and Minneapolis and St. Paul, trying to come to some agreement on what all of us could live with on the transit tax to encourage our legislators to forward. Also spent another probably eight hours on May eleventh there. So was at the, I did come home and sleep. May twelve, had our Scale monthly meeting. Also on May twelve, I attended a fundraiser event for Prairie Point hosted by some of our friends from the county, Bert Bonney Noterman, Brian and Julie Welch, and the SMSC. So it was good to just hear about things. There were folks there from the community who had some of the concerns that neighbors have and talked through them. And so it's just good. I think it's good to keep gathering and talking through the concerns and what that housing might offer to the community. May fifteenth, that was yesterday, I guess, had a virtual legislative update from AMC. And then this morning, of course, we, we had our Community Health Board meeting.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Breckie. Commissioner Beer?
Thank you very much. First off, with all that time down at the Capitol, what's your new office number?
This one still works.
Thank you for, I was talking about the physical office number down there. Thank you for doing, representing us down there. Thank you for doing that work. Second, also post-board workshop, the ninth of May, Fish Partner Network. It's interesting, you know, in Minnesota, this is sort of a known commodity, but it's interesting that fish is finding much better numbers when food is involved. Food fund and fellowship. So come to your next fish meeting and get fed in all kinds of ways. The ninth later also that day was the Scott County Prevention Coalition. Tenth of May, our MESB, Aging Infrastructure, Looking for Money, it's a common theme. Twelfth was Scale, I would say it's, the twelfth of May, that Scale presentation was probably one of the most electrifying I've been a part of.
That's great.
It was good. It was on electricity, if you weren't there. Five fifteen, I guess was last night, City of Prior Lake. I was at the city council portion, but in the workshop, they did talk about timing on some of their annexation with Spring Lake. I think it's a twenty-four-one, twenty-four-two of the parcels. I may be getting those numbers wrong, but, and, but as part of the council, there's ongoing discussions with annexation and I can't help but wonder as I look down to my left, if there isn't someone who could potentially, not mediate, but convene a meeting with some interested parties, just looking down there. But one part of the council meeting, we had full-on drum corps from SMSC. I don't know if that's the right phrase, but the, you know, four folks around the drums, it was awesome. There was a flag presentation of the SMSC to the City of Prior Lake. So that will now be on display from here on out. So it was a neat, it was a really neat presentation. With that, that ends my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Beer. On the second, I was out at New Market Township, pretty quiet. On the fourth, I was at the Capitol with the transportation deal. Just on a side note, thank you, Commissioner Breckie. I know she spent a lot of time at that Capitol, so we appreciate that. On the eighth, I was on at Cedar Lake Farm. They're having, you know, some of the residents don't like the little traffic pattern that's set up. But as we talked through all the different scenarios, it really, doing the roundabout there is probably the best thing. And thank you to Leslie and Tony Winicki, our N-Engineer, for coming out there. It really helped because there was, this has been ongoing, I think, Leslie, for, this has gotta be at least six months, doesn't it? Or more, so anyhow. And planning and zoning that night, the, and they're all quiet, there are a few permits. And the tenth, the MESB met, had a little meeting with the Credit River Mayor also on the tenth. IA thirty-five Solutions met, went over a little bit of data on busing and things there. Spring Lake Township that evening, had a very short meeting. The Elko New Market, I was at their planning commission, or the planning part of the meeting workshop. And they talked about water and what they're gonna charge and the charges for if this water plant does come in, come in there. Then the Scale meeting, as was mentioned, with the electric grid. And last night, Prior Lake, I was at part of the workshop. They talked about budgeting for the next year and went through all the different items they had, whether it was the police, the parks, the roads, all that stuff. And yeah, so I wish I could have stayed for the, the second part of the workshop with the annexation, but wasn't able to do that, so I missed that part, so. And that is my report. Is anyone, Commissioner Leslie?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Yes, yesterday at Scale Services, we did talk a little bit about the board vote on the Spring Lake Township and the need to have the cities and the townships meet and discuss some of the timing and the use of these properties. Both the CDA, Julie, and of course, the county were there and offered to play a role, you know, as you suggested, Commissioner Beer. And how can we sit down and help have some of those conversations? So I'm hoping they'll reach out and some of those will move forward. Just a reminder, we have the work session afterward on unwinding of the continuous MA benefits, where we'll talk about that. And then, I'm not sure how, but in two weeks, May twenty-ninth, it's Memorial Day already. The county will be closed for services on that Monday. But then on the thirtieth, at nine o'clock, we do have our Vet Services Recognition for Memorial Day. And then you'll have a tour of the Medical Examiner Facility at two o'clock. And that is our joint powers and our partnership with Hennepin and Dakota County. So it's been the first time since the COVID that we've been able to be in there and get a tour. So that should be very interesting as well.
Okay, thank you. I did forget to mention one thing when you, Spring Lake Township, they did kick around the idea of becoming their own city or even somebody brought up the Credit River taking them over. So it's not getting any better over there, anyhow.
Mr. Chair, tell me about that, or tell us a little bit more about Elko New Market, what the DNR came back with on the permit?
They applied for the permit, I think, back in late November or early December, is that right, Leslie? And then they needed an extension. And now I think they've won another four or five months. And some people at the city, I think, are, I've heard are wondering, you know, if Minneapolis or St. Paul needed more water for something, and they would have put a permit in the mail, the DNR would have probably sent the okay for that before they even got the letter from the city. So this has taken a lot longer. And some of the folks over at Elko New Market can't figure out why, but it's been, it's been a while. So anyhow, thank you for asking that. So anyhow, county attorney, do we need a reason to recess?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we do not.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we do not.
Okay. With that, we will have a workshop after this to talk about medical assistance and unwind of continuous coverage. That'll look for a motion to adjourn. And there's a motion, there is a second. Any discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned.